Robert Bishop?
Here.
John Bartels?
Here.
John Boyo?
Here.
Edward Holt?
Here.
Mark Strout?
Here.
All here?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, I'll entertain a motion for the December 18th minutes, please.
We motion we approve the minutes from December 18th, 2017.
I second that.
Okay. I have a couple corrections possibly. The first one's been the first line. It should be the regular meeting, not executive session. And on the page two, it should be my name. It doesn't stop. Robert Bartels. It should be Robert Bishop.
Yeah.
Anyone else see anything?
Yeah, I've got a couple. Down from where you corrected my name, where it says John Bartels, Mary Cherry requested it, and reconstruction. The "and reconstruction" should be taken out of that because the reconstruction was something that was figured out a long time ago. And on page three, under master plan review, where my name is listed and what was, what I said. I don't, I don't know what the, what the statement, I don't remember the statement. And there must be something more to it. It says states we have a select board. I don't, I don't know what that refers to. And I don't remember making it. So I would, I'd rather have that stricken from it if possible. And I believe that's it for me.
Okay, anyone else? Motion amended to accept the corrections.
We motion we approve the minutes from December 18th, 2017 as amended.
I'll second that.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you. This is a time when the public may address the board on any item listed on a meeting agenda or on any issue or matter of the town. If you intend on addressing the board at this time, we ask you to do the following. Please identify yourself by name, address, or the company/institution you represent. The public address to the board segment will last no longer than 30 minutes. Please make your comments concise and try not to repeat statements made by others. Please address your comments to the board chair. Discussion or debate on any issue may not take place at this time. Questions on procedural matters may be answered by the chair or the designee. Please be cordial and respectful of others. And if anyone wishes to be recognized when an agenda item is discussed by the board, please make the request at this time. This request may be granted by the board chair. Okay. Yeah?
Good evening. Thank you for this opportunity. My name is Allison Dixon. I work for Housatonic Valley Association, and I wanted to come before you just to let you know we did receive the Central Berkshire Fund grant to help Dalton create a Be River Smart Stormwater Community Program. It's a small amount of money, and the grant period is from now until about October, and there's a development time period, and then an opportunity to do outreach events and community programs and create displays and materials that hopefully can live on afterwards. This meets in some part the Dalton's federal requirements to develop stormwater educational programs for the community. I did just a, it is funded by the Central Berkshire Fund of the Berkshire-Taconic Community Foundation. So I did just a one-page, so you have it, so you know how to reach me, because we are going to be meeting with different committees and getting input into exactly the format that makes sense. We'll be meeting with the Stormwater Committee. You're probably more familiar with Dennis Riegen. And Dennis has been in touch with Kenneth, but it's this, Ken Walso, as this grant was being put together. So I'm looking to hopefully get input from everyone. And I brought some of our decals. You may have been familiar with these. They've been stuck on your drains before, and this is an opportunity to get more decals to inform the community. You don't want to dump down the storm drains. So the hope is that through this education, we'll improve the health of the rivers, less pollution getting to the rivers. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And we're encouraging people to, we'll be scheduling storm drain decal-ing parties, and I'm hoping that some of the town officials will step up and maybe host a party where we can come and do the education. And you can, and you can provide maybe some goodies or something and get some drain decal. So I will leave you a few of these, too.
Thank you.
And maybe that will remind you to schedule a party with us. I brought an extra copy, but I can't see it.
All right, thank you, Allison.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Yes.
My name is Paul Tobone. I represent the Dalton Lions Club, and we're just seeking permission to have there's a be any family circus for our 2016 year. It's a very important fundraiser. It'll be at the Legion Field July 6th, 7th, and 8th. There will be two shows on Friday and Saturday, and one on Sunday. And underlined the fact there are no exotic animals. I think the most exotic animal last year was dogs. But it was a very successful fundraiser. We're just seeking permission this year.
Okay, thank you, Paul.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Yes.
Good evening. Francine Turane, 448 Washington Mountain Road. I'm here with many of my neighbors to address the petition that I believe is on the agenda, item number nine. What we're requesting is that the select board remedy the situation on Washington Mountain Road with regards to the heavy commercial truck traffic, which has increased dramatically over the last several years. These trucks are traveling at extreme high rates of speed. They are unable to negotiate the hill, which is very steep, the grade, corners. And most recently, the most recent accident late November resulted in a toxic spill with a large, heavy commercial vehicle that was hauling another large, heavy commercial vehicle and ended up in an inverse yard, fifteen very close to their home. This situation has increased dramatically, as I had stated before. And during the warm months, it is nearly impossible to walk the road, which has no sidewalks. To retrieve your mail is certainly, could be sometimes a very dramatic death-defying defeat. Anyone who has any animals, young children, grand children, none of these children play anywhere near the road. And our children, who are young adults now, always knew that you had to play very far in the back, away from the road. Children are not allowed anywhere near the road. We have tandem logging trucks that are on the road all day in the warmer months. Usually truck traffic starts at about 4:00 a.m. and can go until dark. We have heavy commercial dump trucks, which are carrying heavy loads of gravel and granite. We have tractor-trailer trucks who will stop and ask you where they are because their GPS is sending them up over Washington Mountain Road. And once they get to our house, which is very close to the Washington line, they realize that they've made a major mistake. And then they have a very difficult time trying to back their trucks down to Ashley Way to then turn around and get back onto a major route where they should all be traveling anyway. We have cement trucks that go up and down the road. Let's see, what else do we have? Flatbed trailers, often carrying large loads of granite, and flatbeds that are also carrying other heavy commercial vehicles. The situation is a public safety issue, and it certainly, we, I would prefer that we have a truck ban. I realize that that is an extremely difficult law to impose, but I'm also asking that we take a look at weight limits on Washington Mountain Road. We have several bridges on Washington Mountain Road. I fear that they are being compromised with the volume of truck traffic and the weight that these trucks are carrying. And I think it's a matter of time before they fail. And also, the road itself is very compromised. There, it's, the truck traffic is just tearing up the road. There are definitely potholes, and that road's going to need to be repaired and repaid at some point. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Scott Leffler, Washington Mountain Road. I was just here to, my support to Francine, and just to restate everything that she has stated.
Marielle Raymer, 294 Washington Mountain Road. I just want to let you know that we did take a survey one day.
Sat out on my front porch all day long, I think it was on October 8th. There were 55 trucks coming down the road, and all of them were not speeding, but going fast and making so much noise. So I don't know if we have a way of stopping them from using, I think they call them jake brakes?
Jake brakes.
Jake brakes. There's something about the noise that's got to be done. The road has got to be repaired. I know we're not supposed to be repeating, and I apologize for that, repeating what's already been said, but the road has got to be repaired. The trucks have got to stop. I know Chief Coe did set up, a police officer down there for two weeks, and he did a great job, and we really appreciated it. However, the officers are there for about an hour in the morning, not at 3:30 to 5:30 in the afternoon when we really need them, when the trucks are going back up the mountain and down. About last year, White Wolf went up and down the mountain 50 times in one day. So if we could do something about that, we would love that. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Kurt Dunell, 398 Washington Mountain Road. We were the ones subject to the crash. I'd like to see the guardrail repaired. We've got, we lost 120 feet of guardrail. I want that guardrail repaired as soon as possible. I want reflectors on that guardrail. I want signage from the Dalton Town Line that say "steep grade" and "trucks use low gear." And perhaps, that should cover, as part of what I would like to see. The other comments are evident, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Nick Del Greco, a neighbor, 432 Washington Mountain Road. In addition to what was said, in the summertime, you have excessive noise from motorcycles. They seem to love to start at the bottom of the hill and rev up their engines and just grind it all the way up, and that becomes quite objectionable. The other thing is, right at that intersection, the curve where we're talking about, there's a 25 mile an hour speed limit. It should either be enforced or taken away. I mean, if you put someone there and you're religiously enforce that, the word will get out, and you'll find, as we did when I first moved to the Berkshires, you didn't go through Nassau, New York without slowing down, okay? They had a reputation, and that reputation's still there. I've never seen a cop there, but every time I go, I slow down.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you.
Mary Ross, 311 Washington Mountain Road. When we have heavy rains, half of the, a lot of the driveway just goes down the road. We're down to just crumbles of pavement. That road has been so chopped up from the trucks and everything that it washes up on the yards, it washes down the road. And I also am fearful, even just coming, riding up Washington Mountain Road to come home with these trucks barreling down that mountain, you know? And it's just the gravity of it. And you see a huge truck, fully loaded with logs or gravel, barreling down on you while you're, you know, doing your 30 miles an hour up. And I find it, it's nerve-wracking. It's nerve-wracking, to say the least. Thank you for listening.
Angela Wersell, 316 Washington Mountain Road. I don't want to echo what everybody has said today, but I certainly support what they have said. I believe Kirchner Road has a weight limit on truck traffic, so I would certainly support something like that that's applicable to Washington Mountain Road. Thank you.
I'm Sharon Dean. I'm 350 Washington Mountain Road. And I just want to address one thing. On the corner of Washington Mountain Road where you have Kirchner, we've lived here about seven years, but this past, this was spring and summer, I want to say a good handful of times when I'm coming down the road, especially when you get those grass and, I mean, trees and you can't see. I'm telling you, I was good enough to know to like, kind of, you have a sense to slow down. So many times cars are just going straight across. They're not slowing, they're not going down. And one day, I almost-
At the stop sign?
The what stop sign? There is no, there's no stop, there's no yield. There's nothing.
I'd say I dragged my bike towards.
And I mean, and there was a-
I must get taken out.
-a huge dump truck one day, and something told me to slow down. And I, so I, like, I came like to a stop, and this, that, it was a full dump truck. He hauled, went straight up Kirchner.
That stop sign's optional.
Yeah, but that's, that's the one coming from, not coming from Kirchner to, this is the one that they're coming from, you know, Dalton Division. If you're on Dalton Division, you make a left, and that, you know what I'm saying? Go past, we're showing it that way. They're coming that way, instead of going that turn and go up Washington Mountain, they're hauling and going straight. And if you're coming down there, that is a crazy accident waiting to happen. I mean, that's, yeah. So hopefully something can be done before somebody's life has to be taken care of that.
Brian Ram, 294 Washington Mountain Road. Just kind of what you were talking about is, it's like I said, that Kirchner Road stop sign is optional. Nobody stops for that. Let's, let's get people stopping for that, because people like me that are going down Washington Mountain to the stop sign, you have to look to your right. There's no such thing as people stopping for that. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Could I just add one thing?
Yes.
When I called White Wolf last summer to ask him, like, "What are you doing?" He said, "What, what has changed so much?" And I said, "Can't you just find a road that has a sidewalk go down, like Main Street in Dalton where the sidewalk is? Because taking a walk on Washington Mountain Road is not something you want to do anymore." Well, when I called White Wolf, the lady there said to me, "We're not allowed to go down Kirchner Road." And I said, "Why not?" And he said, "Well, we're just, we were barred from Kirchner Road." And I said, "Well, then you're barred from Washington Mountain Road." And I don't want to go down Washington Mountain Road either. And she said, "Well, this is the fastest route for me. We're going to continue." She was not nice. I hope nobody owns White Wolf here. She was not, she was not nice. And they were not lis, she would not listen. I asked her, whoever owns White Wolf, Mr. White Wolf or whatever, to call, and never heard back from any, never heard back from them. I didn't just call once, I probably called four or five times. I did call the Highway Department a couple of times. I did call the Police Department a couple of times. I have to say Dalton did respond and talk to me and call me, and I've got all the emails that we've, I've got lots of emails. So I was very pleased with hearing back from Jeff Coe and the Highway Department, Heather, I think it is, or something. She's a very nice, gentle lady. But anyway, their response to me was, "We're not allowed to go down Kirchner Road." Well, how do we make it so that they're not allowed to come down Washington Mountain Road, too? Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Mary Piper, 295 Washington Mountain Road. I just want to make a statement that our road also seems to be a very popular road for people who bike or walk, as they're not necessarily people who live in the neighborhood. So they're people who don't know necessarily about the truck traffic, and I think it's just an accident waiting to happen. You cannot see those trucks coming when you're on your bike going 30 miles an hour.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Scott Leffler, Washington Mountain Road. I also wanted to express concern in regard to springtime when the construction starts. The concrete vehicles use it as a shortcut when they're going into other towns beyond Dalton and beyond Washington. They use it as a cutover to go to Route 8 to continue their deliveries further on. It's not deliveries that they're making on Washington Mountain Road or to support any of the construction on the road. And they go up and down the road at all hours of the day, and as people have discussed, the noise can be deafening at times.
Okay. Jeff?
Make the suggestion and continue the discussion and bring this item up now. Seem that everything is spoken and we can continue.
Absolutely.
Mr. Chairman, it's very good to discuss the whole issue right now, but I think it's a great idea, Jeff. Can I ask you a quick question of the participants here?
Absolutely, sure.
Do you feel your problems have been exacerbated by the recent reconstruction of Washington Mountain Road in the town of Washington by the state of Massachusetts?
Yes. Well, that's where the log is going on, right?
It's much better pavement up top, so-
Oh, okay.
Right. It's a better transit route.
It's a loop route. Right. Your problems have become much worse since they completed the construction in the town of Washington.
I, I would say that even before they did reconstruction, the truck traffic on the road was intolerable at that time as well, and it's only gotten worse. So even though they have done the reconstruction at the top of the hill in Washington, even before then, it was intolerable. And several years ago, there was another truck spill on Washington Mountain Road in the town of Dalton that did cause an environmental spill. I don't know if people would call that or not, but- This is not the first time when there's been an environmental spill caused by a truck on the road in Dalton.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Francine?
I just wanted to address that. The construction on the top, I think even passenger vehicles, I mean, they come down that hill at work speed. They couldn't stop if they wanted to. However, I did speak with a selectman in Washington, and he said that he was getting complaints from residents in Washington that since they have made the improvements, quote unquote, that the speed has been out of control, not just with passenger vehicles, but also with trucks. So I think what's happening is by the time they reach the top of our hill, they, I mean, they, they can't, they can't stop. And if they're, if they're carrying weight, I think just the inertia alone is just, they are, they're coming down that, it, it is frightening. And I had talked to Mr. Bishop before. Just spend a couple of hours midday in the, in the spring or summer months, you know, standing on Ashley Way or in one of our front yards, and it's, it's pretty, it's pretty frightening. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Can we arrange to have that bridge taken out again, the one that's-
Jeff? Just to, just to address a couple things, I took some notes while we were speaking. The first thing is, is a truck ban, and someone alluded to the fact that we have to get, it's hard to get, and it is hard to get. We tried to get it for Kirchner Road, and you have to get approval of all the towns that the road passes through.
Well, it sounds like, though, you might have, if Washington is good.
Maybe, maybe so, but this is, I believe it would also go into Beckett, because then it turns into, well, it's Washington Mountain Road, Pittsfield Road, and then it's Mackin Ernie Road. So I think we would have to go through all three towns. But again, we have to get the permission and the consensus of all three towns to do it. Sir, excuse me, I don't remember your name, but I know where your house is. It's a white house on Washington Mountain Road where the truck went into the tree.
Yeah, I'm correct, yeah.
The guardrail more than likely will be replaced as soon as we go through the process of insurance and this type of stuff, and then they come up and they replace the guardrails. But with signage, I think we could do the same thing, to have a, a study done like we did on the intersection down on Division Road.
That makes sense.
To see if we could improve the signage, starting at our town line and coming down through that area. So that is a possibility, get different signage through there. But we, we got a study, and if you, if you remember the change that took place at Division Road and William Street, and that signage really improved things, believe it or not. The, of course, the enforcement thing is always a crapshoot, too. Depends on when the police are available and when they can get up there to do the enforcement. And I can't speak, I can't speak to-
We'll take pictures.
I can't speak to what they have, but I can tell you, I used to haunt that area myself a lot, because I grew up on Washington Mountain Road. And I've seen a lot of stuff on that road. So I, I feel your pain. Accidents, deaths, the gamut, over 50 years, you know? So it's, it's a matter of getting up there and stretching your time from the center of town out to the south end of town, doing the enforcement, doing it other places. And as I was saying, I'm just, I know Chief Coe would have other things to say, but, you know, I'm sure they're trying, but they can do more. I'm sure they can. Jake brakes. We tried to get a ban on jake brakes in town before, and I don't remember what happened with that.
Nothing.
I know we couldn't do it, or it didn't get approved.
We went and talked to the, what was allegedly the aggrieving party, and asked them we would not have his truck drivers use their jake brakes on East Main Street in Dalton.
Oh, okay. But what happened to the ban? Do you remember?
Nothing.
Can I address that? In regard to the jake brakes?
Yeah.
Can a noise ordinance be passed?
We have a noise ordinance, and we did it on Kirchner Road, and the health agent, correct me if I'm wrong, Ken, goes up with a monitoring device to see what normal noise is during a particular time of day, or an average noise during the, during a time period. And then they'll do it over a course of days or weeks, and to see if there actually is an amount of noise registering above a certain decibel, you know, for truck traffic or whatever it may be, to see if anyone in particular is in violation of that noise ordinance. That's the noise ordinance we have, in a nutshell. It's tough to enforce, but it is, it is something that's on the books. Yeah.
We have to come up with a way to limit the amount of traffic on there. Even with the jake brake thing, we just got to figure out a way to reduce the amount of traffic with the trucks on that road. Has this gone? Is the Traffic Commission seeing any of this?
I believe, oh, I'm sorry, I thought you were asking me.
Anybody I got.
The Chair of the Traffic Commission has been in contact with some of the residents in the street, and the Traffic Commission intends to take this up when they next meet.
What if it makes sense, Ken? We, as a select board, got together with Chief Coe and John Goffle, and yourself and Dan Filio to come up with a meeting, a quick meeting, to see what we can do to answer some of these questions, especially the, the weight on a bridge. I mean, I'm very concerned on that. Those bridges aren't that big.
Yeah. The intersection down at the bottom of the road is being looked into, as we speak, to be reconstructed, to make it safer to, as you were saying, people come from Dalton Division Road and they cut straight across onto Kirchner, and as you're coming down Washington Mountain Road, you got to be careful. You're looking, you know, to see if anyone has a directional on, which is kind of non-existent, and then if they're going to go across the intersection. So you know, it's a lot of defensive driving there. But that is being looked into. In fact, Dan Filio, the Chair of the Traffic Commission, came up with a diagram and suggestions, and we're going to solicit the state, so.
Yes, sir. I don't exactly know when the Traffic Commission meets, but could their meeting be held at a time in the evening when people could possibly attend as opposed to during, during the day?
I think it's 4 o'clock in the afternoon, but I'm not sure.
Unfortunately, but, you know, that, that's not convenient for-
Yeah.
Or prohibits those that work on attending, so.
We could, we could solicit the Chair and see if he could.
If you could, please.
Francine?
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
If you needed to include the other towns in either a weight ban or a weight limit or a truck ban, how do you go about doing that as a select board?
We'll contact their select board.
And request that they meet with you to discuss that particular matter?
Yes.
Okay. And if you get collaboration, then what happens if they say sure?
Our town manager, yeah. And I, you know, you still have to go through the process, which involves the state. So the ideal situation is that all the towns agree that something needs to be done, and then we go to the state, and it makes the state's decision easy.
Why does, why does the state need to be involved?
It's a matter of regulation, I think, which emanates from the law.
And I, because it's, I don't believe it's a state road.
It is, well, it is not a state road, but it's an intercommunity road. And the state, the state has its hands in all traffic decisions that even individual communities make.
Even with the posting of speed limits?
Yeah.
That's a state, that's a state regulation.
It connects two communities. And they-
And they expended, the state has expended funds, at least on the Washington Mountain Park. That's what makes it an issue regarding permission to ban anything or change the speed limit. It goes through the state Department of Transportation.
So with regards to a weight limit, if Dalton is, if we're requesting that the weight limit is affecting our bridges essentially, on our section of the road, is that something that we can prevail and talk to the state about, that our concern is our infrastructure and the volume of the truck traffic and how that's affecting the infrastructure on our road?
I don't see why not.
Mr. Chairman, if I would.
Sure.
What I would suggest, in fact, I was going to suggest at the end of the discussion, that the weight limit might be the quickest and fastest way to limit truck traffic on that byway pass through Washington Mountain Road. If we could immediately, the town manager, contact the State Department, District One, right down here in Lennox, and ask him to ascertain the weight limits for those bridges, so then we could post them, that would immediately set something into action already. But I don't think you should let the town manager, any of the town officials handle this, and not yourself.
I didn't, I didn't.
Go ahead.
Oh, no, I would love the town to.
Yeah.
I'm not on the select board, nor am I on the traffic commission, not yet anyway, but I'm just curious how we can go about, because spring is around the corner, and then we start all over again, and I think that we could be as proactive as possible, and a weight limit is going to be able to help us with that.
We could do that right away, I think, if the board's in concurrence.
I agree with you, John. If you're going to wait, if we're going to wait for this, select board to meet with another select board to meet with another select board to meet with the state, that's going to walk forever.
And the traffic commission, who I'm certain would just kick it back to us anyway. And that's what they do, they recommend to this board.
The weight limit may extend for the whole road, though, like the truck ban would extend to the whole road. It may have the same, we may have to follow the same guidelines as that.
How was it done on Kirchner?
That, I didn't know that there was, I didn't think that there was any weight limit on Kirchner Road. I don't know where that statement from...
It is, and it was, there's an article posted. There was an article in the Berkshire Eagle that discussed it.
And it's posted.
John Boyle, were you involved in that?
Yes, I was. We had the same problem, almost carbon copy of this on Kirchner Road four or five years ago.
When they redid it.
Kirchner Road.
They redid that four or five years ago.
Redid what?
The pavement.
Oh, and I'm talking about the pavement, yeah, they did.
And that one that got...
But our, the solution was, the towns were opposed, Hinesdale and Washington, to banning truck traffic on Kirchner Road. So we suggested posting the weight limits on the bridge at the bottom of the hill, and we did. And I guess it worked, because it's no longer as much truck traffic. It worked, okay.
So we followed the same methodology.
That's what I'm suggesting. That's exactly what I'm suggesting, sir.
The weight limit, I'm just trying to get everything out here. The weight limit, I thought, was also regulated by the state, because the state either owns or regulates all bridges in the Commonwealth unless given to the town. And as far as I know, the only one that we own is out on Cleveland Road.
We could ask them to come out here and review and inspect the bridges on Washington Mountain Road and suggest a weight limit to us, and we could post it.
Okay. All right.
I think that's what I'm suggesting.
Do we have then, we want to have Ken, or we want to just do it as a consensus?
No, that would be a motion.
Yes, you want to make a motion, John?
I move that we contact the Department of Transportation, District One Engineering Department to ascertain weight limits for bridges, all bridges on Washington Mountain Road, and advise the town of Dalton, advise the select board in the town of Dalton where they're in, and we will take action, the appropriate action.
I think we should also contact the other towns, too. I'll make it a separate motion, though.
Okay.
Okay. Yeah, we're going to do this?
No, a separate motion, so we could get everything going at the same time. Who knows what's going to get done first.
Let's do this one motion first, okay?
Yep.
All right. A motion's been made and seconded. Is there any other concerns? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Town Manager, would you please contact the state?
I will.
Thank you, sir.
Could we... I'd just like to add to my motion that, it's for informational purpose, we do happen to have in town government right now, an ex-engineer from the, retired engineer from the Department of Transportation, District One, whose expertise and lifelong career was in inspecting bridges. I'm certain that he will be a big help to us in dealing with this issue, and have some good suggestions how to work our way through the bureaucracy.
I would also note that over time, as bridges age, it's not unusual for them to have to have a lower weight limit.
Yes.
So I think that you can make a basis that these bridges are old.
The other motion I'd like to make is, we should go ahead and contact the other towns, Washington and Beckett, and suggest that there be a truck ban, see how they are going to react to it. Because they'll bring it up at their board meeting, as I remember Washington brought it up when we brought up Kirchner Road at their separate select board meetings. So we might as well get that started as well, to see where they stand and work both ends here.
That's a great idea, John. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second that. John, would that include also Pittsfield and Beckett?
It would include Washington and Beckett, because Pittsfield isn't, isn't part of Washington Mountain Road, it's just William Street, so it would be Dalton, Washington, and Beckett.
Okay.
As part of that motion, I have an input on that. You should look at also the weight ban on all the roads, on the, you know, as you go past the town line into Washington into Beckett. Your motion was just to include, what points, it wasn't including weight ban discussion with the state, you know, you're offering a motion to the towns, but I'd like you also to include in our motion, looking at weight of bridges that go through other towns.
I don't think we should be treading in other towns' businesses, but we can suggest it in the letter.
It's, it's, you know, I just want to get that out there.
Let's at least contact other towns, and just go on like John said.
In this letter, it would be, we are considering a truck ban because of the truck traffic on Washington Mountain Road.
Increased truck traffic and incidence of accidents and pedestrian highway safety.
And also, it'd be in our best interest, all our interests, to determine the weight limits on all bridges in Washington, Beckett, and Dalton.
On that road.
On that road.
On that road, yes.
Could we also include something in regard to environmental concerns? Because there is conservation land that's, that's on both sides of the road, and houses are on wells, and if there is another environmental spill, can it impact water flow?
Just words of wise, I think if you try to overburden some of these small select boards in Washington and Beckett, it might get the whole process of making the road safer mired down. Not that we're not environmentally conscious, but just from experience dealing with these type of things.
Yes, sir. What?
Is that a motion, John?
Yeah, I thought I made the motion, yes.
I made the motion to contact back into Washington. Yeah, back into Washington with regard to a truck ban on Washington Mountain Road slash
Pittsfield Road slash McInerney Road. And if, you know, and as we are, we are not inspecting our bridges, but figuring out the weight limitations on our bridges on that road, we've requested they also make that determination in their, in their section of the road.
That's good.
Excellent.
Okay. All right, is there any further discussion on this? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, Ken, can we get that letter drafted up?
I can say one more thing.
Yeah.
John just hinted about it, but in relation to the pass-through stop sign, Kirchner Road to Washington Mountain Road, there's a plan afoot, I guess it's gone along quite a ways, that Kirchner Road would not merge with Washington Route, Washington Mountain Road, and there'd be anymore. Kirchner Road would come in a westerly direction, the bottom of the hill, cross the brook, and then turn right to a right intersection onto Washington Mountain Road with a stop sign or possibly a traffic light, I don't know. It would make it, instead of the V thing, a right-hand turn. And that's definitely in the works, according to Dan Filio, right? Yes. So, I want you to know that that problem's been worked on, too, and the sooner it can be implemented, the better, as far as I'm concerned.
And how about the road, you know, they did a great job coming down Washington Mountain Road with the construction of the road, but right in front of all of our houses, it's a mess. The trucks make so much noise going by them, so this is a plan to repave the road, not just patch it, it's been patched so many times. And can we ask them to just take care of the rest of the road? They've only, they left like a half a mile undone, and it really is where all of our houses are.
That was kind of a gift, yeah, from the town of Washington's and the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, and it was Jim Hedner?
Yeah.
Who asked them specifically, hey, can you extend the pavement down around the corner?
Yeah.
And they did. So that wasn't even our doing, that was the town of Washington's just giving us, giving us a little bit. And as for what we have in store for our roads, I don't know, we've got Chapter 90 going on for next, well, next year's Old Windsor Road, but in the future.
It's a small, short area, it's only about a half a mile. Take the extra $500 that they raised off of our taxes last year, just fix the road. All our taxes went up at least $500. Just give me a road.
Everybody has to start up and down that section of road anyway, you know?
I think you park a rookie up there, you can make enough in park.
Yeah, there you go.
To pay for all the roads in Dalton, because you get some whopper fines on there.
I know.
I tell you, they're doing 70 or 80 miles an hour past my house, all day long, all day long. It's fast.
You ought to convince me, I know.
It's fast.
I'm from Purdy, 398 Washington Mountain Road, and it was my house that the truck barreled into at least our yard. Today, I was coming home from an errand, and I decided to drive that road. The exact posted speed limit is 40 miles at the bottom of the road. When you get to the base of our property, it turns to 25, and up beyond Scott and Francine, it goes to 30. You feel like you're crawling, and most people will not do it. In fact, where the 25 is, they accelerate to make the hill. Coming down is the same thing. I downshifted to second, and I stayed at the 30 all the way down, but no one else does that. And now we've got ice and snow season, and we have no guardrail, and it's, we're anxiety ridden just living where we did, because obviously we know what will happen. A suggestion I had made earlier was, obviously the police can't be there all the time. When they post those temporary speed limit flashing things and you see how fast you're going, people tend to pay attention to those. And I did a little internet research, those are available on a permanent installation basis, a sign, solar-driven, where you can post it and say, it's 25 here, and you're going 45. You know, maybe that at least can make people aware that this is what the speed limit is, and you're not going that at all.
Now, they even had a zappy with like unhappy faces. That's a good idea. Unhappy face.
The Long Road has one, and Hinsdale has one over, going down Robinson Road as well. They're becoming more, not popular, but more in demand and more useful. So that is a good suggestion.
Okay, anything else? Yes?
Could I, just a question, before we leave the subject, who's making the money on the logging that's going on the top of Washington Mountain? On the backs of the people that live there and have to listen to it, and the roads that Dalton has to maintain? Who's making the money?
I'm not sure who's got that.
The people on top of Washington Mountain Road are coming down there, and like they said, double tandem trucks, those things got to weigh 20 tons.
Police, no.
Somebody is making money, and I'm just wondering, who? The state? The town?
Who owns that property? Does that part of the...
I don't know if it's State Forest or what.
What are they logging? What type of logs?
Oh, it's big as a room.
I know the size, but I mean, the top, there's a pine, there's an angle there.
I went up there to take a look at the company's name, which I sense is relevant, but I don't know if it's like a board, make boards out of it, or firewood, or what.
Okay, then where up on top of the mountain?
Oh, it's just right, probably two miles up from where we're talking.
Does it pass the radio tower up there?
I don't think so. That's State Forest, that's all State Forest.
Before that?
Yeah, it's just...
Well, it's either the city of Pittsfield or the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
Probably Commonwealth.
Well, I'd like to see Dalton making some money off of that deal, because they're making us miserable.
About cobble. You're one of them all once from the dirt fight authority.
Okay, anything else? The select board, thank you for your interest and bring this to our attention, and hopefully we'll get this resolved for you, okay?
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Those dogs.
I know what trucks I have, but like, anything, I see you sitting up there, makes a great point. Environment. No, he tours out. Stop crying, dog.
Thank you.
Good job. Stop crying, dog. Continue. Okay, we're back to item six, appointments. The first one is for the Assistant Town Collector. Okay, this is from, a memo to the select board from Kenneth Wallo. I hereby recommend for your ratification appointment of Tracy Eastwood to the position of Assistant Town Collector effective January 29, 2018. Do we have a motion for that?
Make a motion, we appoint Tracy Eastwood to the position of Assistant Town Collector effective January 29, 2018.
I'll second that.
Okay. The motion's been made and seconded, is there any discussion? Ms. Eastwood is here, along with Melissa Davis. Do you have any questions for her? No, you get very well qualified from here, and we appreciate you coming forward and working with the town.
Thank you very much, I can't wait to start. I can't wait for it to start.
I'm back.
Yeah, well, it's a busy season, so.
Thank you very much for the opportunity.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Thank you, thank you for waiting, I appreciate it.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, the second one, appointment to the Traffic Commission. It's a memo from Kenneth Wallo to the select board. I hereby recommend for your ratification appointment of John Roughly of 128 Pleasant Street to the Traffic Commission for a term to expire June 30, 2018. Mr. Roughly will fill a currently vacant position. A motion, please.
Make a motion, we appoint John Roughly to the Traffic Commission, expiring June 30, 2018.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded, is there any further discussion?
She's an excellent candidate.
Oh, fantastic.
Just a comment, I thought, I thought he was automatic.
No, he's not.
He's not, huh?
Yeah. The traffic commission is pestering all the time, they said we may as well make him a member.
Good, good, no, he'll be a good addition. I just thought the position was automatic.
You voluntold him.
I voluntold him.
Oh, I love that word. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you, Josh. Okay, item seven, approval of the Frosted Mug 5K Race on February 25, 2018. We have a email from Kent Lemme. "Tide Judy, the Berkshire Running Center is looking to put on the Frosted 5K Series 2000 Race Number Three in conjunction with Dewey's Public House on February 25, 2018. We plan to use the same route as his past two years, and I have already reached out to Chief Coe and coordinated with his help for the day." Okay, a motion to accept.
Make a motion, approve.
I'll second that.
Okay. Motion's been made and seconded, is there any discussion?
I just, I don't remember what the route was.
It's up off of Depot Street.
They go down Uzi and then come back?
Yeah.
Is that what it is, a back track?
Yeah.
Okay.
I know this, I think they said this is the third year, but Deanna was up there last year, and Kent Lemme was here last year, and he said everything went smooth as could be, and the chief, yeah, so.
Well, I know it went, I just, I just didn't remember where the route was, that's all. Mark, is this event weather-sensitive?
Nope, they go.
They go.
Good, it's not a Sunday, right?
Yeah. Yeah.
Good.
Well, you could have a water stop out in front of your house.
Hey, I'll be there.
Frosted mugs, maybe you can hand out beers.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Next on the agenda is the Lions Club Circus. Should I recuse myself since I'm a member of the Lions Club on this? I will stay out of this one. Mark, would you handle this, please?
Yeah, we have a letter from the Lions Club, Dear Select Board Members, that Don't Lions Club Are Asking Permission to Bring the Zerbeany Family Circus. This will be our 26th year for the important fundraiser for our sight and hearing programs. It will be at the Legion Field July 6, 7, and 8. There will be two shows on Friday, Saturday, and one on Sunday. The circus has no exotic animals.
I'll make the motion that we approve the request to the Lions Club to hold their annual circus on July 6, 7, and 8.
Second. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstain.
Abstain. Thank you.
You know, I wanted to ask you, this is the same outfit you had last year.
Yes, it is. The last two years, and we were very well accepted, and we made, actually, it was one of our best home rations.
Last year, we had five shows, I think it was sold out.
Yeah.
Almost standing room only on our own.
Okay.
That's good.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Okay. Next item, I'm going to ask our Town Manager to speak too, it's the Lakuna Falls Victoria Villard Trailer Park update. Ken, would you?
And you can see, there's a, I asked Ed Fahey, as you asked me to, write a memorandum updating us on the status of the installation, and there's a, attached to his letter, is a letter from Michael Deep to Ed, and while the septic system has been installed and all the homes hooked up, there's problems with the drainage there. It appears to be because of the sand, and so now it's become a legal matter between the contractor that supplied the sand and Mr. Deep. And so, the issue is not settled yet, but according to Mr. Fahey, Mr. Deep has done what he was supposed to have done.
That's not good.
Well, it bridges up the question, and I only know about this because I was in the Select's office while our administrative assistant was on the phone. And evidently, Mr. Deep has already told the residents up there that he's completed the work, and they should start paying the second increment of the rental increase.
Well, he's done that in the past, and I think he has to petition his board before that's.
Yeah, so, actually, I suggested to his board that the, that we reiterate, that the rental increase doesn't go into effect until the Board of Health certifies that this project is done.
That's correct.
That's right, that's true.
So, until the sand thing is taken care of?
Until it works.
Until they certify it to whatever, whatever they come up with, the Board of Health, until they certify the project is done according to specs, the rental increase, second part of the rental increase, not go into effect.
Absolutely.
That's a motion.
I'll second that.
Okay.
So, we, yes, I mean, you know, she didn't really know what to do, John, I just told them, I don't know.
So, we are, we're waiting, as soon as, as soon as Mr. Fahey signs off on this, we're good?
Yeah.
Okay.
I think that was the original decision of the board.
Yeah, it was. Even if, even if there's an issue between Mr. Deep and his supplier of the sand, it doesn't matter, that's, that's, that's not our concern. Our concern is what our health agent signs off on, and until he signs off on it, there is no rent increase.
Correct.
Correct? Okay, just want to make sure of that.
Yeah, just try it, yeah. Have something that Judy can run with her cat when they call the office.
Right, we can send them a notice, as we did last time, if it's not your pleasure. Send them a notice last night.
Please, send them a notice. All right, motion's been made and seconded, is there any further discussion?
Clarification and seconded? Can I clarify?
I hear you.
Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Good. Item 10, Communication from Planning Board, District Local Technical Assistance, 2018. We have a memo from the Chairman, Daniel Esco, of the Chairman of the Downtown Planning Board. He says, "The Dalton Planning Board has recommended that use prior drive-through town proposals changing by law 350-61.1 in the application to Bertrand Regional Planning Commission for technical assistance." Ken, can you expand on that for us?
Yeah, if you look in your main end basket, you'll see the District Local Technical Assistance application, and we did attach two proposals, recent proposals, done in the last five years or so, in our request for technical assistance from you.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, anything more on that? Okay, item 11, Town Manager's Updates.
Okay, I've got a bunch of things, not really so much for discussion, but just to let you know what some of the things I've been working on here. The first one is Veterans Service Officer. Our Veterans Agent or Veterans Service Officer originally had planned to leave her position, retire in effect, at the end of December. I asked her to stay on while we looked for a new Veterans Agent, and in the meantime, I spoke with Mike Canal, who's the Director of Administration and Finance in North Adams, and they've given us a proposal for a regional Veterans Agent. So, what you'll see in your package is by way of information, I wanted you to have that now, because I'll ask for this to be an agenda item on our next, at our next meeting, is the form of the agreement. There is a regional agreement now between North Adams, Williamstown, and Adams. So, this, if you look in you, in this packet, you'll see a spreadsheet which contemplates a number of other towns, including Dalton. So, what I've requested, since North Adams is a little far for our veterans to travel, is that we have, continue to have office hours here, which we would. So, North Adams is agreeable to doing that. Right now, they have two full-time people on staff, one a Veterans Agent, the Secretary of Administrative Assistant, they would be here one day a week, with the same hours, and you can see it's in their proposal. It would be a slightly increased cost, and we can debate and discuss that next time, whether you feel that's worth it or not. I certainly think, in terms of regional services, this may be a very good proposal. The city of North Adams is ready, if you approve this at our next meeting, to begin providing those services to the town as of February 1st.
How much of an increase?
Maybe about $3,000.
For the year?
The stipend we pay. On an annual basis, yeah. So, it'd be less than a half a year, so it'd be, you know, about $1,500.
This collaborative, would have office hours here one day a week?
One day a week.
Now, don't we currently have two days a week?
We had changed that to one day a week, same amount of hours, but compressed it to one day, yeah, about a year ago. Yeah.
She splits her time between here and the senior center.
Splits her day between here and the senior center, but we classed it to one day a week.
Oh, okay, I see.
At her request, yeah, same amount of hours, just one day a week, consider.
Would we do the same?
Yeah. We'd do the same thing. So, the proposal is to do it, I think, they're just showing on this schedule, Wednesdays from 8 to 1.
What was it before then? 11 to 3?
10 to 2, something like that, or 11, yeah.
I think it was 11 to 3, because she was down there until 3 o'clock.
And just used it.
Yeah, morning air.
Something like that, yeah.
10 o'clock, I think.
But you're, from 4 to 6 or something, Dan?
No, I think it was 10 to, 10 to noon, it's on the door anyway, yeah.
10 to noon?
Yeah, and then she would, she would go over to the senior center for the afternoon.
So, we limited the Monday and Tuesday. I didn't know, I wasn't aware of this.
Right, yeah.
She used to be here in the evening, she was here Monday nights to say hi to her.
Yeah.
So, now it's all in one day, and she's here a part of the day, then she goes over there for the rest of the day.
That's right.
Thank you, I didn't know that.
The next issue I have for you is Green Communities. We're still trying to remember, we have to complete spending the residual amount of that grant, we came in under budget, about $9,000, almost $10,000, we have to spend that money before we're eligible to apply for another grant. And what we're trying to do again, just to remind you, is to complete the design for the LED streetlights, that's part of it, and then to do the energy conservation measures in the cemetery offices that were called out in an energy audit that we had done in 2016. And that's what we're working on. So, it appears that right now, we're going to do the streetlight design, we're going to do the, insulate the cemetery offices, we had considered putting in a furnace, but it looks like we're going to do the insulation, and then there'll be a little bit, there's a little bit of engineering in there too, because we're going to have a hill, as our engineer looked this over, make sure we're complying with the requirements of Green Communities' funding. Next is net metering. We have been set up, I work with Beth Greenblatt, Dalton is now the host of that solar field in Hinsdale, as we discussed. The contract with BVD, Beth had made some suggested changes to the folks at BVD, they have agreed on the technical aspects of it, we've, it's under legal review now with the Town Council, she'll be getting back to us very soon. The agreement with HCOG is still in progress, the Cow Power Program is still in process, but this should be easy, once we get done with the, kind of the business piece of this, because our Town Council has already done a couple of these agreements for the same project, so it's going to be pretty straightforward. As we've discussed, we've submitted the two District Local Technical Assistance applications to Regional Planning Commission. They haven't got the funding yet, they're going to see in advance of the funding whether they can award the projects contingent upon the funding, so we may know sooner, rather than later, whether our projects are funded. Remember, one is for the rezoning, and the other's for the drive-through. I've been in touch with the Pittsfield DPW Commissioner about the sewer bill, and asked him to provide the analysis that he did last year, he promised to do so, so I'm, I'm waiting for that, and as soon as I have it, I'll, we'll brief you, and then pay at least part of the bill, because it exceeds the available appropriation. Marijuana, you will see in your packet, latest information we have from the MMA on the regulations released for public comment, and some notice has been in the paper, you will see the 107-page document in your inbox if you care to read it. I have not read it all yet, I skimmed through it. What you'll also have in your packet here is, I've provided the KP Law model, if we want to propose that the town ban marijuana establishments in the community. Remember, we've talked about that, we require vote at town meeting, and also a ballot vote. And I think I'll have a proposal at the next meeting, because we're going to have to move on any kind of zoning bylaw that we want to have in the town meeting agenda, because it's got to go through the planning board process.
This would ban it outright?
This would ban, this proposed bylaw would ban it outright in town, yeah, subject to a vote of the town and a vote of the town.
Why wouldn't the board propose something like that when the citizens in town voted for it?
Dalton, well, you're getting to my, you know, what I would talk to you about, but Dalton approved it by a very, very narrow margin, maybe we want the citizens to have another shot at it. That would, that would be my recommendation to you when we give this on the agenda. Finally, this is the official notice you'll see in your packet from Eversource with respect to the, what was it, about a 7-megawatt field, I think, that they, this is just the official notice that that project has been terminated, so.
Did they give you a reason, or just?
Well, what do they say here? They said, "Due to program-wide considerations, we will not be moving forward with the solar route."
Yeah, it's kind of like, no information.
That's all we know.
Wow.
And that completes my update, unless there are any other projects you'd like me to brief you on.
Is there any other questions, Ken? Okay, thank you, sir. All right, remarks to the Select Board.
Mr. Chair?
Sure.
I don't know if this is procedurally correct, but can we go back to the Washington Mountain Road issue on the agenda?
If you've got a question, yeah, why can't we?
Well, I just forgot, I forgot to bring one more thing up. I brought it up, but I didn't follow through with it. We were talking about signage, and last time we had, was it the BRPC did a?
Yeah.
A thing for us on signage?
Yeah.
And I was just wondering if we can do the same thing on Washington Mountain Road.
We had a special state grant at the time, too, on the intersection there.
Oh, that's right, too.
Yeah.
Well, that was my thought, I didn't know if we should, we should start that ball rolling as well.
I think we should contact them for technical assistance, and they've always been great about that, with their traffic folks.
I would make the motion that we do that.
Okay.
Contact BRPC to give us a, or help us with a report on signage for Washington Mountain Road, more specifically, well, no Washington Mountain Road, specific, well, it was asked for the upper part of Washington Mountain Road, but maybe with emphasis for the, the upper part of Washington Mountain Road.
We may want to ask them too, with the, the traffic studies they did in Dalton Vision though, if we're thinking about it.
Yeah, we could do that, too.
Yeah. Well, I'll talk to them generally about helping us out with it, because I know what the concerns are.
Okay. Still, why don't you do your motion?
Yes, yes, as well as the traffic study.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded, is there any further discussion?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Good catch, Ken. Okay, item 12, Remarks to the Select Board. I have one. We are, Dalton's hosting the Small Town Summit this Thursday at 6:00 PM in the Crane Room. A lady named Beth Bandy is organizing this, and have done this in several other towns, so they're trying to get small towns together to talk about common problems and whatnot, so.
Yeah, primarily Finance Committee's and the Select Board's.
Finance Committee, correct.
I think they're going to start at 7, I saw.
Okay, yeah, okay.
Instead of 6?
Yeah, we posted for 6, because we didn't know the exact time. We hadn't seen anything, but the Town Administrator from Lanesboro sent me the notice today.
So, but it's definitely 7, then?
It's definitely 7, okay.
I'm not going to be an hour late.
You're just being a little.
I'll be an hour early.
I'll double check it if there's any change.
Okay, the agenda's forthcoming, I do believe, so.
I'll be unable to attend, I'll be.
I got, we got your note on that, Ken, you are going to be a little busy.
Yeah.
Okay. Anybody else for, Remarks to the Select Board? Once again, I just want to thank all the town employees on the Highway Department for keeping them roads open, especially on the holidays, and all with our police and fire departments. Appreciate it. Okay. Items for future agendas. Anything new? John, we got your request, so that's, they're going to go in. Leads us to our announcements. Oh, it's on there, I didn't even see that. God, I'm not even going to read it. Okay, the transfer station are accepting Christmas trees now. Their hours of operations are Tuesday and Wednesdays, 2:00 PM to 6:00 PM, Friday, 8:00 PM to 4:00 PM. The Dalton Police Department is reminding citizens of Dalton of the winter parking ban from 1:00 AM to 6:00 AM, which went into effect November 15, 2017, and will be in effect to April 15, 2018. Our whole office hours on Thursdays from 4:30 to 6:00. Please note that Dalton's official meetings, postings, agendas, and minutes can be viewed Please note that Dalton's official meetings, postings, agendas, and minutes can be viewed at mytowngovernment.org/01226. The Veterans Agents' office hours are on Tuesdays from 10:30 AM to 1:00 PM at the Town Hall, and from 1:00 PM to 3:30 PM at the Dalton Senior Centers. You can reach the Veterans Agent at 413-684-6111, extension 19. Representative Paul Mark holds office hours at the Dalton Town Hall in the Callahan Room on Tuesdays from 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM, with the exception on a third Tuesday of each month. On the third Tuesday, office hours are 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM at the Town Hall, and 1:00 PM to 4:00 PM at the Dalton Senior Center. You can reach his office at his district number, which is 413-464-5635. The building inspecting office hours are Monday, Wednesday, and Thursday, 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM, and Tuesday from 8:00 AM to 12:30 PM. I declare that an open meeting may have detrimental effects on the negotiation position of the public body.
I'm going to go to the executive session to conduct a strategy, strategy session in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, and to comply with or act under